It's over there. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the assembled perfect friendships among united nations.
First on the agenda is approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion second.
I got a motion in a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second, did you get who did that, Mandy? Second approval of minutes from Tuesday, August fifth meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Is that a first?
I'll enter.
If you said you didn't, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now entertain a motion to approve the meetings from Tuesday, September the second special meeting. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third, approval of accounts payable and payroll. And I'm sure you guys have had that in your packet and you've had time to review it. Does anybody have any questions or anything on that?
Motion is offered.
Second.
Got a motion as second to approve accounts payable and payroll? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item four, presentation by Wireless Tower Solutions Corporation, Dean Williamson.
Chairwoman, thank you, commissioners, Mr. County Manager, I'm Dean Williamson. A little loud, is that okay? I'm with Wireless Tower Solutions, we're out of Albuquerque. And I'm here to talk to you about a proposed ordinance for wireless towers in the county. And our service that goes with that. I have a ninety second promo video and then about a dozen slides to show you. And I think you got a copy of them as well. So if you would please want to video them?
We provide a comprehensive set of professional services. We provide a comprehensive set of professional services that enable local governments to regulate wireless facilities, including effective regulations, online application processing, and final inspections. Local governments to this day still have a fiduciary duty to their constituents. Local governments need best tools and strategies to keep them on a level playing field with the wireless industry. Even with the federal and state government restrictive regulations, Wireless Tower Solutions has the tools, ordinance, resolutions, application management platform, skills, expertise, and ongoing services to do that for all local governments. Hi there, my name is Amp. I am the software that provides the application management platform. I am one of the most valuable tools that help local governments to manage wireless facilities applications. I bring your wireless application process into the digital age. My purpose is to enable local governments to be their best at regulating the wireless industry, regardless of size, staffing, or expertise. Our twenty plus years of experience in the field and best legal and professional engineering minds will come in handy to represent local governments and provide the support needed. We provide the best mix of solutions to support your specific needs. We are covering any potential problem at no cost to the local government.
Just bring the slides up. I'll tell you, I started, I approached your county manager with this. In fact, I've approached the past two county managers. And I started with Ms. Hamilton a couple of years ago. We've been doing this since twenty seventeen in New Mexico. And every time I talked to a county manager, they said, yeah, sure, that sounds great, let's do something. But we never, we never got it in front of the commission and, or got the ordinance. So, so I'm here today to do this presentation to show the commission exactly what we do. We're currently working with, just in your neck of the woods here, Quay County and Otero County are currently, I'm working for them. But beyond that, we've got, I think it's eleven or twelve clients around the state. And you have all of those references in your packet. And as the video said, this is no charge to the county, so it's really a win-win for everybody. First of all, that's who we are, and our website is on the bottom of that. Go ahead, slide. So, you know, the video said we had twenty years, and now I'm saying we have a hundred and fifty years. Take your pick. We, when you say, all of the folks who work for the company, it's myself, Mr. Patterson is our CEO out of Albuquerque. We run our software and finance part out of South Carolina. And then our engineering and legal support comes out of Colorado. And so when you add all those up, that's where you get to a hundred and fifty years. We have an online application program. I'll show you a slide of that in a minute. Fixed price approach, which I'll explain more as well. And the bottom line is, the reason we're here is we give the county the ability to equalize with the telecom industry. So, instead of a carrier coming in and saying, hey, we want to build a three hundred foot tower in the middle, middle of your town, and you say, well, we don't have an ordinance and do whatever you want to do. We come in with the ordinance and say, okay, here's the rules that you have to abide by. And if you have height limitations, if you have camouflage limitations, things like that, that's what the ordinance does for you. Slide. So, this slide kind of speaks for itself. Here's what the tower owners want to build. And here's what the county wants it to look like. And with an ordinance in place, you can say, hey, we want to have camouflage, we want to have limitations on exactly what the applicants can do. So, those are all good reasons to regulate. Five G expansion was kind of a big thing back a couple of years ago. Hasn't panned out as much, you're not seeing as many five G installations. But that doesn't mean it can't happen right here in Portales. They have one up in Santa Rosa, which has been there for quite a few years. So you may get five G applications, and I mention that because they're huge. Instead of one tower, it might be twenty. And that's just one application, and they could have forty antennas throughout the town on telephone poles. And those, if they're in the county right of way, that also gives the county an opportunity to charge the right-of-way fee. But without an ordinance, you're not able to do that. And that's in a, in a state law from twenty eighteen. I think you're limited to two hundred and fifty bucks a pole that the county owns. So, again, if the, if the carrier wants to come in and co-locate on your, on your county poles in your right-of-way, the ordinance enables you to, to manage that. Slide, please. I'll just say right off the top, probably about seventy-five percent of our clients don't have a building department, don't have a planning staff, and that's kind of what we function as. We're like a free, if you will, I don't want to say a complete planning staff, but we work for you. And we, if there's a planning staff there, we work in conjunction with them. If not, we work with the county manager and his staff to handle these applications. So most of the counties that we work with have very limited staff, and frankly, that's one of the reasons they hire us. We're like free labor. Application processing, so you either have an ordinance or you don't. If you have an ordinance, you're stuck doing the application processing yourself. And a typical application for a new tower is a couple, few hundred documents. On an existing tower, a co-location or a modification is going to be a hundred documents to review, the engineering studies, things like that. That's why counties don't do an ordinance, is they just don't want to deal with it. But that's all that we do, and I do that every day around the state, and that's, that's my full-time job. So we handle the application processing. We also provide the ordinance to the county. Now, we don't write it for you, we have a model ordinance. We work with your legal advisor to make sure that it says exactly what you want it to say. But we have the ordinance and two accompanying resolutions that go with it. You have examples for Otero County in your, in your packet. So that's how we start. Once the ordinance is written, everybody's happy with it, we bring it back to the commission for voting, and that goes into place. Once the ordinance is in place, any applicants that come to the county and say, hey, we want to co-locate our AT&amp;T antennas on an existing cell, you send them to us, we deal with it. We collect the fees as your agent, send the county your portion, and then average fee for co-location for all the counties in the state is about three thousand dollars. So, I don't want to say exactly how much the county can make, because it depends year over year, how busy a county is. But you can see anywhere from three thousand to seven thousand dollars per application fee for the county, depending on the type of job. And then we handle the permitting. One thing this doesn't say is I also personally do the inspections. I drive all over the state constantly, and once the job is done, I go do the inspection, produce the report. So we're looking for safety, we're looking for fencing, we're looking for turnarounds, things of that nature that the New Mexico Construction Industry Division may not care about. We're making sure that the towers comply with your ordinance and making sure that they're safe. So in that way, you're ensuring the county has a, some sort of safety built into it. In fact, that's why Otero County hired us. I talked with the safety guy there, and he said, oh yeah, we had a tower collapse a couple of years ago, and we'd really like to have an ordinance to know what's going on with the towers. So that's, that's how we got in with Otero. And one other thing is the software that I'm going to show you, it actually builds a database of the towers in your county. DeBaca County hired us specifically for that reason, just because they want to have a database of what's in the tower, or what's in the county, tower-wise. Slide, please. This is the software I'm talking about, this is how we process the applications. And you'll, you read it left to right. The bottom line is, you can, these are all new jobs down the site, and as they're processed, these will turn to green. The county is kept in control, because every time anything happens on this, an automatic email goes out to the county manager, or whoever's managing it here in the county, working with me, and you'll see this as, as it's going through. So it keeps you in control, we're working for the county. It's cloud-based, post-application database, I don't know what that means, but that's what it is. Standard reporting service, you get monthly reports or whenever you want. And I already mentioned the customized ordinance. Slide, please. So how do we meet your needs? These are the things that it helps the municipality with. I already talked about, we do the ordinance, the permitting process, we have the online application, and we do the inspections when it's all said and done. And those are the things, the public safety issues, that really the ordinance is focused on. And if you don't have an ordinance, then you're not looking at these things, because these are not things that CID, with their building permits, will look at. When these, when these companies come in and get a permit with the CID, they're looking at concrete paths, they're looking at electric, they're looking at things, things of that nature. So your ordinance would say, okay, what's the structural integrity of this tower, so it doesn't fall down? And I'll tell you, just, I don't want to give an overestimate, but every new client we come, we come on, there are, half of the towers in the state, or in the county, are lacking on maintenance. In other words, towers are required to be inspected and maintained every three to five years. Guide towers are three years, five years for self-supporting. And if there's no permit requirement for them to co-locate or do anything to that tower, the inspections lapse, because they don't want to spend the money, the tower owners don't. So, I, I see it, every, every new county, you'll have about half of the towers in the county have expired maintenance. So what happens is, they come and they apply, say, hey, we want to modify this tower and put new antennas on, put a generator on, whatever. We'll say, okay, show us the current tower inspection. And no, we don't have one, and they say, well, you got to have one, get permit, then, you know, that's when the spur starts to fly, as you say. But, at any rate, that's what, what it does. It also protects the community character, I showed you the picture earlier, kind of tower they want to build versus the kind of tower you want to see. So that, that gives you the ability to do that. Slide, please. I did notice that one tower coming into town, that's like three hundred foot tower, three fifty, that's a pretty big tower. And I will say that none of our current clients have a tower height restriction. But that is something, if that bothers you, that you can do. You can say, hey, no tower is higher than a hundred feet in this area, or two hundred feet in that area, so that's something you can add. So the carriers, they certainly don't like paying fees. But what they do like is, they like knowing step one, two, three, four, five. And as I said, we've got all the clients around the state right now. The carriers love us when they come to us, because it's very clear-cut, here's what you need per permit. Now, of course, they'd rather not have to get a permit at all, but that doesn't work for the county, it doesn't, doesn't ensure safety. So, that's how we, we help the carriers, is we're, we're making this a very predictable, very, very easy process for them to go through. Slide. Revenue and cost benefits, I did talk a little about that. These permit fees are not a non-tax-based revenue source for the county. So, you know, there's that. The other thing that you can do is, every one of our current clients says, the first thing we want you to do, new tower builder, is look at our properties first, the county properties first. So if you want to build a new tower in Roosevelt County, you're going to look at county properties, then you're going to look at industrial areas, you're going to... So what that does is that gets you the rental fee every month, the lease, the land lease. And it's, it's another way for the county to optimize your income. Cost benefits, as I said, were free. I didn't mention the way we get paid, is the ordinance says, hey, when you want to put in an application, you come, you come to the county, the applicant pays our fees and they pay your fees. So that's how we get paid, and it's, and it's no cost to the county. Our expert assistants already talked about the folks that we have, our lawyers, an actual telecom lawyer out of Colorado. So, he's the guy looking at this ordinance to make sure it passes muster with everything. And our engineers, if we need them, we have actual telecom engineers looking at the structures of the towers, et cetera. So, again, that all comes at no cost to the county, and it's kind of that free building department, if you will, where, where we have that capability. Doesn't require any administrative time for the county, you have to sign the permit. When we send it to you and say, hey, we've looked, this looks pretty good. Or if it's a new tower, we're going to bring it to the commission and say, hey, we've looked at this, it looks pretty good, or not. But we do all of that, I do all of that, doesn't cost your, your folks any administrative time. Also, we handle the finance part, I don't know if the financial person is here, but we collect the fees. We send the county your portion, we keep our portion in escrow with a legal firm in Albuquerque. And then once the job's done, the county manager, whoever says, yep, job's done, release the funds. So that, that means that your finance department doesn't have to deal with escrows, all you got to do is be able to accept a check or an ACH process. So we've done everything we can to totally minimize the effort it takes for a county to do this. I talked about the online process, our prices are fixed, we have every kind of job. If it's a co-location, we're going to charge five thousand dollars. If it's a new tower, we're going to charge seven thousand. It's all in the contract that you have in your book. And that makes the escrow easy for us, because there's no refunds, there's no nothing, it's a fixed, fixed price approach, makes it very easy. Bottom line is, it keeps you in control the whole time. Slide. And that's the summary of the key benefits, and I stand for questions.
What's the health impact on the community of these kind of towers? I saw earlier that you said, or the slide said that there was minimal, what was it, bandwidth output?
All right, so you're, so you're asking the, the health impact from the frequency of the cell tower itself? Yeah, so the big thing is with five G, those are, the current cell towers and, and what they do, all we can do as a, as a jurisdiction is say, are you complying with the FCC laws that say, here's the limitations on how much you can, you can pump out with your antenna? And we do that via what they call a near report, that's a non-ionizing electromagnetic report. But it says, okay, here's the antennas we're using, and that's all part of the application that we review. It says, here's the antennas we're using, the power we're going to put out. And as long as it complies with what the FCC says is acceptable, you can't do anything. Now, what, what has happened is five G towers, all right? They're smaller bandwidth, but they're much lower, they're on top of telephone poles. And this is where you can get into issues where, jeez, okay, you're allowed to put one on the telephone pole. The, the carriers went into the state all around the country, but specifically New Mexico back in twenty eighteen. And they got a law passed that says, you're not really allowed to stop most of this, you have to let them build on the towers, right? But when it's, when the antenna's down at fifty feet and it's sitting outside your kid's window, you know, a hundred, a hundred feet down the road, that might be an issue. Now, they can still comply with the FCC rules, but you have to write the ordinance in such a way, and it is written, where it gives the county some options to say, well, okay, let's move that one to a different spot. You're, you're allowed to locate on our poles, but guys, this is right outside the county commissioner's five-year-old daughter's window. And, you know, it's blasting straight into us, so maybe we could work and put the antenna in another direction or something like that, so... But again, you're not able to say no, all you can say is it has to comply with the FCC guidelines. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
There's not a lot that, unfortunately, and the cell companies got a lot of money to spend at legislatures around the country to get these passed, so...
And I guess depending on the design would affect the footprint as far as the structure itself?
Oh, absolutely, right.
So that one, it was a big cross, it looked like there was a building under it almost?
Yeah, that picture's actually from Albuquerque, and most of the churches in Albuquerque at least, I don't say most, but their stables all have cell towers in them, because it gives churches an opportunity to make money. But yeah, it's a radome, and it's not just that, it's not just the crosses, you can have McKinley County is one of our clients, they have a clock tower. It's, it's when you're heading up the, up the road, up, up to the reservation, you look to the left, and there's a big clock tower there, it's actually a cell tower. It was one of the ones that we worked, worked through. But, you know, you can have pine trees, you can have all kinds of stuff. But those, those are examples of ways they can camouflage the towers. And, you know, do you want one out in the middle of a field, do you want to camouflage, probably not. Grant County, we just got a tower approved there, where it was out in the middle of nowhere. But it was a scenic drive that goes up through the, through the mountains there in, in the, trying to remember the name of the mountain range. But, at any rate, so they made a pine tree-looking thing. Yeah, not the best, but looks better than a straight old cell tower. But the point is, is an ordinance gives you that opportunity to say, hey, guys, you know, we'd kind of like some camouflage, and it's written, and it's legal. And they, and the, and the cell companies can't tell you found sand, we're going to do whatever we want, it gives you a little more control over it.
You have anything, anybody else?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Item B, presentation by NMC PACE, Eric Christensen. Are they not here?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate you for letting me join virtually this morning. I'll just share some slides that I've tried, oh, I believe it's been disabled, is there a way I can share my screen? Thank you. So as was mentioned, my name, my name is Eric Christensen. I'm the manager for the New Mexico C-PACE program. Just a little bit of context, the reason we reached out to Roosevelt County through your county manager is we were approached by Navitas, who are retrofitting a plant within Roosevelt County to be utilized for biofuel production. So for those who are familiar with that project, so they're hoping to utilize C-PACE financing to opt into the program. It does require an ordinance to be passed by the county, and so that's the purpose for today's presentation. And a member of Navitas, Edward Zaidman, was hoping to be here. I just got an email that they got stuck in transit, and so if they're able to arrive, they'll be able to share more about their particular project, but I'll go ahead and share about this program. And so just wanted to share that I do work for a New Mexican consulting company called Adelante Consulting. We've been contracted by the state's Economic Development Department to manage this program, but it is a program of the New Mexico Economic Development Department. So C-PACE stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's an alternative source of financing for improvements to commercial properties. It can cover the direct and indirect costs related to four categories of improvements on a property. So this is energy efficiency, reducing water consumption, generating renewable energy, or building resiliency. And so building resiliency could be stormwater management, wildfire resiliency, those types of measures. The two most common of these categories that's utilized on most of the projects that we fund are energy efficiency and reducing water consumption. And we have a few case studies that I'll go over at the end that will demonstrate this. And so eligible properties include any privately owned, commercial, agricultural, industrial, or multifamily property of five or more dwelling units. So that's where we have a slight overlap with residential. If it's multifamily of five or more dwelling units, then it would also be allowed to utilize C-PACE financing. And the property can also be owned by a not-for-profit organization. And just to give a sense, across the country, we have over ninety C-PACE lenders that have funded seven billion dollars on over three thousand commercial properties across the country. So how the program is established, I mentioned briefly, but first, a state authorizes C-PACE through a statute. This was done in twenty twenty-three with the Improvement Special Assessment Act via House Bill two-two-eight. And through that statute, it stipulates that for counties and municipalities to allow the program, a county needs to pass an ordinance, and a municipality would be required to pass a resolution. And that's just to allow commercial property owners within their jurisdiction to access this type of financing. I won't go through all the points in this slide, but where the C-PACE funding comes from, it's from the private sector. We have lenders that will provide all the funding, so there's no need for any public dollars or subsidy. We're not reliant on federal funds. And currently, so how the funding works specifically is that when a transaction closes, then the applicant, both the borrower and lender, would pay the administrator ourselves a fee based on that transaction. And then all of our other services would, would come at no cost. I don't know how clearly this will come across, I know the writing's a bit small, but just wanted to give a sense of the application process for C-PACE. So first, we would connect the property owner with a lender or capital provider. They would agree to terms, that's left to the private sector. Once they've agreed to their terms, they would then submit their application, and we have all of our documentation online, and we're happy to walk people through that for, yeah, they would submit their application for their particular project. In the top right corner, I've tried to highlight some of the key documents, so there's the project application form, the lien holder consent form, and that's something that I'll go into a little more detail. And then there is a certificate of eligible improvements, that's typically completed by a third-party engineer that certifies the types of improvements are eligible through this program. Once we receive that documentation, we have ten business days to respond to it. We're not trying to turn folks away, as long as they meet the requirements of the statute and ordinance, then we're approving them or requesting... Uh, we're not trying to turn folks away as long as they meet the requirements of the statute and ordinance, then we're approving them or we're requesting any outstanding information. Um, if it meets the criteria and they're approved, um, then we would then notify the participating county. And a designated representative, which is typically the county manager, would sign off on closing documentation. And at that point, there's a special assessment lien um that is placed on that property. Um, so really to highlight that the role from the county's perspective would be to opt into the program through passing an ordinance, and after that, once we've processed an application, uh it meets the criteria, then the county manager would be required uh to sign off on on closing documents uh to make the the transaction official. Um, and the reason for this is really because of the improvement special assessment lien that is being placed on the property. So that's the role that the local government plays is helping to facilitate uh the placement of that lien. Uh, and then at that point, the the lender would disperse all of the funds upfront to the property owner. Uh, and it would be the lender that would be responsible for billing and collecting the funds, so none of the funds would have to flow through the county. Uh, and then once the repayment is complete based on their terms, um then the release of lien would be recorded. So typical measures that are funded by CPACE uh would include lighting upgrades, HVAC systems, uh building envelope and insulation, boilers and hot water heating, roof replacements, uh and different water conservation um methods. Occasionally, um, we also have solar panels, microgrids. Um, these types of measures can be included on on properties, and as I mentioned, there's also uh building resiliency measures that can be covered. So the general CPACE benefits are that it can finance up to a hundred percent of direct and indirect costs. Typically, for larger projects, um lenders will have a threshold that they're comfortable with, um, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent of the capital stack. Um, they can offer fixed interest rates up to thirty years uh to repay. They also have a three-year lookback period, so not only can it be used to fund improvements that will be made on a property, but if an improvement that's eligible has already been made on a property within three years of an application, um, then they can also refund um those improvements. Uh, and then other benefits are that it's secured by a property lien, so it's not a personal guarantee that's required. And it's not accelerable in the event of default, so only what is due at that moment um can be paid to the the lender. And so the benefits for the property owners and developers is really uh overcoming the upfront costs of a potential project, increasing their property value, uh lowering the operating cost through energy efficiency. Uh, we're always striving to to increase that to the largest extent we can. Uh, and then, of course, because the lien is being placed on the profit property and it's a special assessment, it is transferable upon sale. And then I I did want to highlight, I mentioned that one of the key documents is a lien holder consent form. And the reason for that being that because this is an improvement special assessment that's placed on the property, it would have seniority over other lien holders. Um, so typically, it would be property taxes would come first, then there would be the CPACE lien, and then uh the following lien holders. So for that reason, um lien holders have to give consent. Um, and they have to see the benefits of CPACE being utilized on a project for CPACE um to 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 be used for that particular property. And so kind of the pitch that they would receive is that it enhances their property value, improves the building's longevity. Um, if you look at CPACE financing across the US, there's a very low level uh of delinquency, and so you're really improving your collateral without a significant uh credit risk. Um, and then again, lien holders are not cut out of the equation. They have to give their consent um for CPACE to be utilized. Um, our lenders have, uh, you know, lots of experience uh having conversations with a number of large banks um to figure out, you know, if it's worthwhile for a particular property. And some of our case studies, you know, will demonstrate some of the properties that it's been utilized on. Um, so here, there's specific language from the statute regarding the seniority of lien holders. Um, I'll I'll skip to the next point. Another common question that we have is around liability for local government and counties. So throughout the ordinance and the statute, um, and we have a sample ordinance that counties can utilize. Uh, there is language that ensures that a county, uh and you can read from this language, is not liable in any way for the debt of the property owner. They're not a third-party obliger. They're not pledging or lending its credit to the property owner. Um, and again, the county uh plays a very minimal role. That's the reason for the uh for us as the program administrator uh to be present um in the sense that they don't have to process applications and deal with uh questions related to the program. And then the administrative fees, which is how uh we sustain this program uh are outlined in our program guidebook, but I can just share that it's uh one percent of the total transaction amount, but it's capped at twenty-five thousand. And so that that would be the fee that is paid at closing. It's paid by the lender so that the borrower doesn't have to come up with that money out of their pocket. It's just uh rolled into the amount that they have to pay back over the twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year period. Um, and then the responsibility for us as the program administrator, uh, right now, since the program has been newer, we just launched in April of twenty twenty-four. We've been supporting a lot of interested counties and municipalities to opt in. Obviously, uh processing applications is a large part of our role. Uh, we do a lot of educational outreach with with uh commercial property owners in different jurisdictions, if that's uh needed. Uh, and we do provide semi-annual reports on a CPACE financing loan portfolio to local government. And then updates for New Mexico. So so far, we have uh seven counties, if I'm counting correctly, that have opted in. So we have Burnaleo, Santa Fe, Taos, Dona Ana, Los Alamos, San Juan, and San Miguel. And then municipalities that have opted in include Albuquerque, Taos, Santa Fe, Farmington, and Las Cruces. Uh, and then we closed our first transaction with the Bishop's Lodge Resort. For those who are familiar in Santa Fe County, that was back in September twenty twenty-four. Uh, we just recently closed our fifth transaction, so we've had five transactions since um a year ago. Uh, and we're also, a a lot of our lenders are more interested in supporting uh kind of mid to large-scale projects. They'll usually go as low as about a million dollars, half a million dollars. Uh, but we are working with local credit unions, and there's a New Mexico Climate Investment Center uh that is really interested in supporting projects that are under uh kind of two million dollars, and they'll go, you know, as low as um a hundred thousand or so. And so uh that's definitely an area to support small to midsize uh property owners um that that we're looking into and and wanting to support further. And and so I just wanted to end with a few uh case studies. Uh, I mentioned there's Bishop's Lodge. Uh, that was a very large substantial amount. I think it was seventy-six million that was lent, uh, which is not your typical CPACE transaction, so I I tried to select others that are maybe a little more common. Uh, this one is also uh in Santa Fe County. A lot of our our closings have happened there so far. Um, this was ten million over thirty years uh on the Modern Elder Academy Event and Retreat Center. Um, it was a new construction that they were using that refinance option on uh to kind of recover some of the the costs. Um, and then the types of improvements improvements that were covered were building envelope, HVAC, heat pumps, lighting, low-flow water fixtures. They did use uh solar arrays and solar-powered entry gates. Um, and under the resiliency section, there was a liquid waste disposal facility um that they were able to uh to cover. And so you can kind of see some of the resulting annual utility savings and cost savings that they were able to um to gather over over the course of of this uh loan period. Um, the second one that I wanted to highlight, um, because it was our first multifamily, uh, and it was also our first one that was fully uh on a new construction. Um, and this was just under sixty million over twenty-seven years. The Rancho Santa Fe Apartments within the city of Santa Fe. Uh, again, it was it was, you know, uh focused on energy efficiency and water conservation improvements. Uh, it was a hundred and fifty-six unit garden-style apartment development. Um, and then you can see again on the second slide, um, the same typical improvements were able to be covered. Interior and exterior lighting, high-efficiency HVAC, domestic hot water, building envelope, low-flow plumbing fixtures. And then you can see kind of the resulting annual utility savings. So we do have other case studies. They can be found on our website. We do have a sample ordinance that can be utilized by and adapted by counties. Uh, a lot of our application process uh can be found on our site, and of course, our contact information. We're happy to speak with any stakeholders that want to learn more about the program. Uh, and this is some of of my contact information. Um, but again, going back to kind of the the why for the presentation, we were approached specifically by Navitas and this retrofit of a plant that they're hoping to utilize CPACE on um in the near future. And so um I'll open it up for questions um if there are any.
I have a question. Uh, Maglan Parker. How much debt did those structures incur? And how many years did it take to pay that debt off?
Um, by debt, do you mean uh like the total financing amount?
Upgrades made?
Oh, sorry. Can you repeat that?
Cost of installation of all the upgrades to the properties, how much was that? With labor uh equipment, and how many years did it take to pay that debt off?
So I don't know if I'm I'm fully understanding. I I I wouldn't have the the numbers in terms of what the total project costs were. For each of them, what CPACE was covering was just a portion uh of what was eligible. Uh, I could get that information for you in terms of like what were the project total costs. And then for CPACE, because they recently closed, um, they still have, you know, twenty, twenty-five years to repay um those debts based on this lien that's placed on the property, so that is still ongoing. Does that answer your question?
Not really. Uh, on the one property, it said like nine thousand dollars in savings for for the year. But I'm I'm curious as to what all the upgrades cost and how that nine thousand plays into effect, and for how many years it takes to recoup that money.
I see. Yeah, I I could pull those numbers. I I don't unfortunately have them over the top of my head. Uh, for that one in particular, I I would say the energy efficiency savings were not like significant. Uh, so definitely there was more cost that was put into it based than uh rather than the savings uh that were made on that on that one.
I have a question for you. So when you're talking about redoing these houses and you're putting all the solar, redoing the plumbing, all of those things, what businesses do you use? Do you use local businesses to do that work? Or do you guys have your own people that does that? And is there GRT involved, or are you guys wanting to be tax exempt? How does that work out?
Yeah, so um, no, not tax exempt. Uh, and then we don't have any stipulations around, um, you know, who who works on a particular project, but all the ones that I'm familiar with utilize uh local hires just because I I think it's more cost efficient and simplifies the project. Um, if if that's possible. Um, if it's in a more rural area and they need support, then at times they've brought folks in, but typically it's using uh local workforce.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Christensen. Sorry. I am the deputy treasurer, and I had a question. With this being a special assessment, does it have a separate tax rate?
No, it doesn't. And um, we we've had, I I guess, similar questions from other treasury offices with counties. Um, and I I guess the short answer is that um in in previous forms of this program in other states, the funds actually flowed through the county, and so the treasurers were quite involved. But it was very uh time-intensive for them. So the county would have to put it on their property tax bill, collect the funds, and then uh provide it to the the various uh lenders that were do their sums. Um, but this newer program and a lot of other states are revising their statutes. Uh, the way that it operates is one of the closing documents that the county manager will sign off on ensures that the responsibility for billing and collection is directly done in between the lender and borrower, so the county doesn't really have to um touch the funds or or have to think about any of those elements.
Okay, and my second question is, on these improvements, is that the responsibility of the assessor's office to assess, or are they centrally assessed at the state level?
Um, so we we will verify that it's compliant at the beginning of the project. The lenders will then be the ones who will be on the ground, ensuring that all the improvements uh are carried out. They will also follow whatever the guidelines are locally. So if there's specific guidelines that they have to meet, um, then they'll do that. So it it's primarily the lender that will take that responsibility. Does that answer that question?
No. So my cur- my question was, how are these special improvements assessed? What what who gives them the value?
Oh, it it will continue to go through the the county, the county's assessors. Like, uh, this is once the project is complete? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it would continue to go through the the county assessor.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Devin does.
I'm Stephen Floyd, the county assessor. Um, so I guess if this Navitas uh went bankrupt and then they owed the county a bunch of money, it went on a tax sale. They would owe the county tax money and then they would owe you all? Or how how would that work?
Yeah, so I I I wouldn't be able to speak to all of their funding sources, but how CPACE would work is if Navitas went, and let's say the property went default into default, um, there would stop being a payment to the lender based on those CPACE payments that happen either annually or biannually. And then when the property is put up for sale, whoever, you know, would pick up the property, they would be notified that there's an improvement special assessment lien on this property. They would see how much is still owed. And then whoever purchases the property would have to continue those payments. So the risk to the lender is that in the meantime, they would not receive their their payments. And then it would it would get picked up, but at no point would the cost fall on the on the county uh itself. It would just wait until whoever, you know, buys it uh from the county.
And and do are there like, do we take a Marshall and Swift cost for the solar panels or whatever it is? Or do you have your own cost manuals that we're supposed to assess it by? Or?
I'm that I'm I'm not familiar with um. My assumption is that we'd go with, you know, whatever the requirements are of the county. Um, but I I can follow up with you on that.
But is it like, is it personal property? Like, does it have age, life depreciation, or?
Yeah, it would be treated the same as, yeah, private property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Presentation by New Mexico Community Solar Program for Municipalities, Michael Mead. Is he also on Zoom? Okay. Seeing no one there, we will move on. Item four D, Roosevelt County Community Development Corporation Quarterly Update, Jody Diaz.
Good morning. Is my presentation?
She has slides too, Brandon. Where are they?
I'm not sure.
Is there an email that that gets?
It's not. I have my computer, Brandon. It's media at rooseveltcounty.com.
I emailed. It's media at rooseveltcounty.com. There's nothing. I don't.
It's what? I read her packet. Media at what? Was she have it in the packet?
In the packet.
Thing is in the packet.
It's in our packet.
It's gonna send it to you.
You should have. Yep, there it is.
Yep, there it is. Everything scanned in sideways, so if you see me doing this.
That's what we're looking at.
Mary didn't catch that.
I just wanted to watch you do it.
Well, just start and say good morning. Thank you for having me. I am going to be doing our yearly update for the RCCDC. And, um, just a little bit about the organization. We are a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit organization. We are funded by City of Portales, Roosevelt County, E M U, and then local investors, along with any fundraisers that we have. Um, just a little bit about the organization.